Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, August 11th, 2025 Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioner, Cemetery Commissioner meeting. We're at 71 West Main Street, Room 321A. This meeting is being recorded. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we jump in, the Board would like to extend our condolences to the family of Cecilia Magica. She was a longtime resident, a school staff member. She was a junior high cafeteria worker, which, as we all know, feeding our kids is huge and like such a, just a highlight of a person to work in town, and a town election worker. So, we just want to extend our condolences to her family. Next up, we have the approval of minutes for July 28th, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of 7:28, 25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up, we are going to, we have the approval and release of executive session minutes for August 19th, 2024, September 23rd, 2024, and December 30th, 2024. Any corrections, discussion?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Anything special?
They will find to be released.
Find to be released. I'd like to make a motion to approve and release the executive session minutes of 8:19, 2024, 9:23, 2024, and 12:30, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3:01. Next up, we have citizens' comments. Does anyone want to comment on something not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move forward to resignation. It looks like we received a resignation of Jennifer Canoyer from the Recreation Commission. I don't see her in the room. Do we have any more information on that?
Madam Chair, she thanked the Board for allowing her to serve on the Recreation Commission, but she said she's just busy with other responsibilities and wants to have someone else devote their time fully to the Board.
Understandable. Jen has been a fabulous ambassador for the Recreation Commission, wherever she is. Thank you for all of your hard work executing events and bringing the playground project to fruition. I know she was a very vocal member of the committee for that. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion with regrets, as Mr. Sullivan would say, to accept the resignation of Jennifer Canoyer from the Recreation Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Next up, we have for Public Business, we're going to start with the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. If we have the Treasurer Collector come on down. We're going to take the next two points, I think, together. So, Treasurer Collector, HCGIT, report insurance administrator update on mid-year increases, including the summary factors leading to rate increases, and the trust's current financial position. And then, the Board will publicly discuss next steps regarding health insurance required to the town, and if needed, will motion to direct the town administrator to solicit an independent health insurance consultant or take any other action relative thereto. Before I hand it over to Rich, just as a blanket statement, like last week, late last week, employees were notified about some mid-year insurance rate increases. The Board thought it was vital to discuss it, obviously, in an open, open meeting, to kind of go over what necessitates the mid-year increase and what the town's next steps are.
Okay. Good evening. There's been several conversations about this amongst the Board, the financial team. So where to pick up is sort of a, I'll make it as brief as possible. This is the first time that the trust, first time since we've been there, we had a mid-year increase. What necessitated that? Cash flow. If you want to cut right to the chase, you had May and June being an anomaly, where the trust burned up more than half a month's reserve. It is the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust. The plan is to have a three-month runout. So you had costs increasing and the trust, the dollars in reserve decreasing. So what was once a three-month-plus runout, when the rates were set, to, we've burned through more than expected, in addition to the GLP-1s increasing. Quick note, your CVS Caremark, your prescription drug costs, also nearly doubled in the 12 months. So, lot of factors going on there. The most recent information that we have, as of the Executive Committee meeting, and what was distributed late this afternoon, was the first-month projection for July is on target. What does that tell us? It tells us that the assumptions that were made to move the year forward are as good as can be. It's an anticipation of a few more dollars coming in, presumably in August. And right now, what the trust is doing almost parallels what if you can look to the next few steps, what the town is planning to do. So, my reporting back from the trust is, they've had meetings with their insurance advisor, broker of record, their numbers person, direct meet with Blue Cross, and with CVS, to sort of explain the situation unofficially. No drastic steps had to be taken in the month of July and in August to get to where we are right now. I can get lost in some details. If there's something you need to focus on, I mean, I have half an inch of paper in front of me, and I can put everyone to sleep, or we can kind of get to that next step. What the trust plan is, is to go through and stay as tight as you can to the financials and the plans. You have no control over who has the next heart attack, or what terrible illness befalls somebody. You're resting on what the professionals have provided. May and June were the anomaly. If the plan works with the mid-year increase, or the mid-period increase, because it's not really a mid-year increase, regardless, there's going to be a return of what was lost in May and June and part of in April. So, all things being equal, that's sort of the plan for, for right now, as far as being able to chart what's unexpected, who's going to have a heart attack in December, who's going to have a childhood malady in, in April, something like that. There's a great deal of information that I know the Board has. There are some highlights. We can, we can talk to those. The positive, the positive portion of this, if there is something, both Blue Cross and CVS Caremark have gone through, and limited coverage for GLP-1s, which was identified as one of the larger cost drivers. So, it is anticipated, once the, once those two entities stop using the GLP-1s for an off-label use, there should be some additional savings in there. It's projected to be modest, but that's, and again, I'm explaining what had been explained back to me, which was the hybrid of their numbers person, Blue Cross, CVS.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Carminami? At this point.
Wasn't there a piece in there as well, Rich, that it, it was about, I forgot if the amount was $50,000 or $100,000, that they were more people having-
Yes.
-touch on that?
Of, of course, of course. Individual data's not provided to the trust. You have some numbers people. Normally, when Blue Cross reports back, or our, our numbers person for the trust will report back statistics, so that you can analyze a trend. The discussion was, on average, the population, which would be the 72-member units, between 30 and 35 subscribers, would have $100,000 or more incident. And in the, this period, we'd easily doubled that. So you had more people getting sicker, and that number fell under the reinsurance number. Now, remember, remember, the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust is a trust itself funds. So in years when you have very modest claims, more money is added to that investable portion to offset future, future increases, and to gain interest as part of a portfolio. The idea is that that three-month allows some vacillation. The, the idea that you had a claim over $100,000, but less than the reinsurance amount of $400,000, meant that the, the trust identified a, a group that did not hit that, that ceiling of reinsurance, but had to absorb those costs. And Mr. Sigenovich is correct, there were more than twice the average of more than $300,000, as far as claims go. Regardless of plan design, the trust had to pay for them. If there is a million-dollar loss, the, up to the reinsurance amount is paid by the trust. Beyond that, the reinsurer is going through and paying, reimbursing the trust for the loss beyond that. In a perfect world, your reinsurance is a zero. You are betting against something catastrophic, and hopefully, you are bringing in premium reimbursement that matches what you paid for it. And what you've done is you've sort of hedged your bet for something terribly awful, several million dollars, something like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Through the chair. Just like, you know, thank you, Rich, for the summary. With the, obviously, the notice going out to the town employees and retirees, I just asked to, please stay, as the town's representative for the, the trust, to answer any questions during office hours or something. I don't know if anyone's actually come and seen you already, but-
Called me on my cellphone. So, they, they already have. But that's, that's sort of the relationship I've fostered. And I usually get the yes, when so, when the other retiree was speaking with one of the retirees. So I, I answered, I answered the question for both of them.
Thank you.
But absolutely. So the future is, a close, the Executive Committee would have a, a meeting, not next week, but the following week, and the idea is to keep their fingers on the pulse, to make sure that if there is something, I don't know what control you would have over it, but notification would be the number-one thing. The discussion, the next discussion points are offering something else, and this, this is sort of a side tangent, but the discussion was, this is the line of products that's being offered right now. If the trust were to offer a bare-bones plan, minimum insurability, something along those lines, how would that help cash flow? How would it help enrollment or anything like that? I think it's too, too early in the discussion to, to, to say what that's going to do. You might cannibalize healthy people, but, again, it was probably 15 minutes from Joe Shea, the executive director, saying, got meetings, had meetings all week, last week, and look to do more for that next opportunity, so.
Thank you, Rich. I want to stress that when we found out about this, it, I mean, we took it very seriously, kind of across the board. It's, I mean, it is serious. It's, it's people's health insurance, and it's unfortunate to see, I know that it's not just the HCGIT that is dealing with the GLP-1s and the increased costs and the projections being all over the place, but it's part of the reason that we have started kind of talking about what we're going to do going forward, and like what our options are. Not necessarily that we're looking to like flip the table and, and start over again, but-
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
You mean a general assessment? It's sort of a regroup, the, the trust is, is in the same situation, we're, this is their book of business, and, once this was in the newspaper, I'm sure the phone was ringing on their end, saying, hello, I have your solution. You know, the presumption that there is a consultant out there. I don't believe it's unreasonable for the Town of Dudley to do their own assessment, to stand, to see where they are. Again, right now, you are buying insurance that's likely being sold to a municipality at less than a market value. Again, it's being self-funded, so somebody's not earning a commission on it. So, sort of difficult to match that, but you, if that's the next step, the one that's, that's after this one, bears some fruit, there, that'll be the true test, whether the town is best to stick with their peers in the trust, or could stand strong enough by themselves. That's really not our dis, our discussion, and I don't think that information's available in, at, for this meeting. At one point, somebody's going to be able to validate a next step, whatever it might be.
Mr. Johnson?
Through the chair. Should we, should we move on to next steps?
I think so.
Have the discussion?
Yes.
And just, before we move on, if I could just add one thing, that, the reason that this is important to people who may not be an employee, and why the public and the residents and the taxpayers should tune into this, is because we've already realized an 18% increase July 1st, and now we're facing a 20% increase at the October supplemental. So, where it has a large, where it has an impact on the employee and what that employee contribution is going to be, the reciprocal side is it has, it's definitely going to have an impact on the employer's contribution, which is almost at 40% since July 1st, which is why we're addressing this.
Moving forward, I, I think that we've probably got a couple, a couple of paths ahead. Mr. R, would you mind kind of going over some of those?
Well, we've already notified employees, so that was the, that was the first order of business priority. The next path that we were, that we wanted to look at was to solicit an independent healthcare advisor slash consultant. That's someone who is interested in finding the best solution for the town, as opposed to a solution that may, you know, come from within that group, that the consultant may derive some sort of profit-sharing situation with. After that's been established and done, you know, we're already speaking with Chalkin, who's impacted by this, Bay Path is impacted by it, there's a number of units that are impacted, 73 in total. We're going to go back to relying on some information from an insurance advisory committee, which we used to have, which we need to reform and reseat, to hear consultant recommendations and make some, make some recommendations to the Board of Selectmen as well. And on that committee, it's comprised of a member of each union, retiree, representative, and perhaps one or two other people. But those should be the minimum people that are at the table, and we hear the, what the consultant recommends for the town. So, we, we're working on getting a plan in place.
Does anyone have any questions, comments?
No.
Anyone from the public? Okay. So, with that said, Mr. Johnson?
Do, do we need a motion to move forward that?
Yeah, I think public, public motion would be the way to go. We've spoken about it, in executive, but I think we should probably go ahead and make it a public deal.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to direct the town administrator to solicit an independent health insurance consultant, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Mr. Sigenovich?
I'd like this person to be solely fee-based, if possible, and if they do derive any sort of commission from any provider, that, that should be stated, that should be shared, just so we know. I mean, it'd be great if we could get someone that was like a, just fee-based, like fiduciary sort of, but if we can, and they do, and if it's, I, I don't know if it's common in that industry, if they get a, some sort of a SPF or something like that from insurance companies, but if they do, we, we should know about it.
Through the chair, and to Mr. Sigenovich, we're already, we've already asked Mark Terry, and he's working with his, that's our labor attorney, he's working with his firm to put together a bid package that includes that element of complete independence. It's not to be quoted, it has to be bid, so everybody will be able to see the bids. We'll post them online, everything.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Rich. Okay. Next up, Board of Selectmen votes to approve date of special town meeting, Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, or to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to schedule the special town meeting on Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Could I ask that, prior to the motion being the rein date, or the continuation date could be the 21st?
I'm good with that.
Good with that.
Perfect. I don't wait until I, I will forget it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Aye, ready.
I picked the wrong time. All right. Next, Chair reviews town council's responses to open meeting law complaints. So, after the July 7th meeting, the Board received several open meeting law complaints, and we've since worked with town council to ascertain the validity of what was asserted in those complaints. So, of the complaints we received, there were four main areas of concern. Timely posting of the meeting agenda, the propriety of mid-meeting recess for board members to speak with town council about some questions that we had- members to speak with town council about some questions that we had with various things that were going on with the meeting, sufficiency of compliance with a public hearing requirement for the board to waive the first right of refusal, and the case at which the motions were put forward in that meeting. So based on the summary from town council, the first two areas or topics, the meeting posting, the agenda posting, and whether the recess was conducted according to open meeting laws, both of those were found to be related to the open meeting law. The other two don't really have a basis in open meeting law as it's written, but town council did address it because it it is important. It's something that was important to the people that filed these complaints, so it was looked into. Regarding the first two areas, so for open meeting law, meeting notices have to be posted forty-eight hours ahead of a scheduled meeting. That doesn't include Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays, and if the meeting is revised after it's initially posted within that forty-eight hour window, the date and time of the revision has to be recorded. So in the review for the agenda of that July seventh meeting, it was found that the agenda was initially posted outside the town, the town clerk's office and on the exterior bulletin board with a date and timestamp from the town clerk of July second at three oh five P M., so it met the requirements of the forty-eight hour posting. Because it was posted outside and because it was posted in the town clerk's office, it was available at all times. The revised agenda, and there was a revision, but it, again, met the requirements as the revised agenda was posted in both places on July third and was timed stamped at two forty P M., again, by the the town clerk. To the second point, during the meeting, a recess was held to allow members of the board the opportunity to ask questions of town council regarding risk and procedure options. The complaints that we received alleged that this process allowed the board to deliberate privately, thereby violating open meeting law. Based on the statute that's written in the the general laws that are written, a deliberation requires a quorum, so it has to be a basic majority of the board. During that meeting, we were very careful about not violating open meeting law. As we were sitting with the, we we phoned in to general council, our town council, and at any given time, there were only two members of the board present in the room, along with the town administrator, to ask those questions. There wasn't any deliberation while I was in the room, and according to the other members, there wasn't any deliberation there either, but again, because it rises to the number of people for it to technically be deliberation, that was also, you know, found not to violate open meeting law. The other two points, so talking about the sufficiency of compliance with a public meeting requirement for the board to waive right of first refusal. Unfortunately, so the division of open government is the group that's responsible for open meeting law, and ultimately, this isn't necessarily in their scope because there's nothing specific in general law, chapter sixty-one A, section fourteen, which has to do with right of first refusal. Kind of moving on, that kind, that feeds into the fourth point about the pace of the board vote. There aren't any specifics that govern how fast a motion happens, how quickly the vote is carried out. So the ultimate conclusion, and I'll read this part into into record, I can do that, right?
Sure.
Great. For the reasons set forth above, the board submits that no violation of the open meeting law occurred at the July seventh, twenty twenty-five board of selection meeting referenced in the complaint. In fact, the board carefully followed the open meeting law's requirements at each step as detailed in this response. The board takes the, this opportunity to reaffirm its commitment to the open meeting law, including ensuring all matters subject to open meeting law are properly noticed and discussed in public meetings, and that is a, that's from town council. On a personal note, I I want to make sure that people feel comfortable coming in and making comments going forward. I I know that that's neither here nor there, but this, we do have public meetings for a reason. We we want feedback, we want people to show up, and I just hope that the results of the July seventh meeting don't hamper that in any way going forward. Comments from the board? Mr. Johnson?
As the one that made the motion, I I can understand that the timing of the motion was after some discussion, not after lengths and likes of discussion, because it was our second meeting, so and I think there was a request for a motion, and then the second motion followed, so, and I think the pacing was, was as it was, that, whether it was good or bad, I guess is a matter of personal opinion.
Any public comment? All right, so then, we'll move on to the next point on the agenda. Board of selectmen votes to approve a draft IMA with Blackstone for shared town planner and approve authority for town administrator for each town to provide oversight under and as outlined in the IMA for the shared town planner.
Madam Chair, this, just to clarify the agenda item, I'm asking you to approve the draft that was put into the OneDrive last week. We don't have a, we don't have a, a deal ready to sign because we don't have a shared town planner yet, but I haven't given that to the board to review the draft. You know, in in theory, if the draft is acceptable to Dudley, as it's acceptable to Blackstone, we'd like to move forward with that in mind, if we find a suitable candidate. We would go through the the process of bringing that candidate in, hiring that candidate with the approval of the board of selectmen, and as we do with our shared veteran services officer, our regional dispatch and so forth, the day-to-day management of the planner, when he or she is here, would fall to me with policymaking direction from the planning board, and the same reciprocal setup would happen over in Blackstone. And then if there were an issue that required Blackstone and I, the town administrator in Blackstone, to sit down and talk about, we would do that and try to resolve the issue, the operational issue. So what I'm asking you to do is approve the draft, move forward with the draft, no major changes, when we find a candidate and we find a suitable candidate, a finalist, we'll move forward with that candidate with the approving vote and signatures of the board of selectmen on the IMA from both towns.
Mr. Johnson?
Through the chair, no concerns that the two towns are forty-five minutes apart, finding a candidate somewhere in between that could handle both duties?
No, this, I mean, it's not, it's not an uncommon thing to see a shared service like that, and that distance is not unusual. There's a lot of remote work that can happen, the big thing is to be here during scheduled office hours and evening meetings, and a lot of work can be done, you know, in the office or remotely or.
Not a lot of sight distance.
Correct. Thank you, though.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion.
Perfect.
To approve the draft of the IMA with Blackstone for the shared town planner and approve authority for the town administrator from each town to provide oversight under and as outlined in the IMA for the shared town planner.
Second.
Any discussion? Or you've been to a vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. So we're going to move on to departmental communication. Police?
Just real quick, there was some chatter on social media over the last couple of days regarding the tint at our window. I just want to explain to people, kind of remind them, back in twenty twenty-one, there was a vehicle that crashed through the lobby and Leicester, and a man was seen taking a rifle out, and unfortunately, he was shot by police that day. After that, a lot of area chiefs decided to tint their windows to make it safer for police officers. Our lobby is, our our station is not manned twenty-four-seven, so there might be times where somebody walks up to the window thinking there's somebody behind the window, but there isn't. We have regional dispatch, there's a call button that will direct the person to the dispatcher, who will try to get an officer off the road and try to talk to them. During the morning hours, the light in the lobby is very bright, and even though the lights are on inside dispatch, the tint prevents the person seeing the officer, but I can tell that the reason why that was put in there was primarily because of that reason back in twenty twenty-one, but there's no, we're not trying to be discouraged people from coming in to talking to us, it's just sometimes the station's not manned, we're not, you know, ignoring you, just press that button, and we'll try to help you as soon as possible, but just wanted to kind of explain it to the public, why we have that. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire? Town accountant?
I'll be brief. The auditors are due in next Monday, pretty prepared for them to get going, and we've been working with them already. I know Rich is very engaged with the information requests, and I've been working outside with them also preparing entries, so things, hopefully, we won't have too many adjustments, and we're working on July now, so things should be getting better.
Thank you, Sarah.
I have a quick highway.
Yes.
A remote highway report, Madam Chair.
Remote highway, I love it.
Prep work for road milling and paving is happening right now in Center Road. The road is open, but the superintendent has to limit traffic whenever possible. Roadside mowing is now being completed again daily. This is probably the fourth or fifth run that we've had to do in town because things are growing exponentially, and we try to keep all the brush and debris out of the roadway. And a reminder, there's no water to be discharged from properties onto roadways, so if you have a sump pump or perimeter drain or something, that that's against our bylaw to be discharging that because it erodes the roadways and surfaces, and that's it.
Thank you. Does the other have anything? Treasure collector?
Good evening. Pick up right where Sarah left off. They sent the link, actually, it's been the same link for four or five years, it's the secure portal for the auditors. They sent the request maybe two weeks ago. I had this stuff. It's, it's pretty similar to the the regular month-end stuff, so pretty open line of communications for things like that, in addition to it's sort of Sarah's first time through by herself, so things are running well. Sent our information out to our actuaries so that we can get the update for the Gatsby seventy-four seventy-five for the auditors required reporting. No real bills due this week, so plenty of other phone traffic. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Town administrators report?
Okay. Good news, the groundbreaking for the playground is this Wednesday at ten A M. It's, it's going to be a press release that follows. It's not going to be a huge event, we just want to notify the public that it's underway, so we're going to do that in a full press release and some pictures, maybe, and we anticipate a bigger event when we cut the ribbon, which should hopefully happen, maybe by the end of this year, fingers crossed. As the board is aware, we've received guidance as well as some specific opinions from the A G.'s office relating to the two bylaws, I believe that they were Articles fourteen and fifteen, that were amended by citizen petition. The first one was, I believe, the personnel board, the second one was the T A. bylaw. As part of that guidance, the attorney general directed town to seek further opinion from town council, and that opinion came on Friday. It was provided to the board as well as the town clerk, I think everybody has a copy in the OneDrive as well, and the information is available for for the board's review currently. It will be posted online along with the A G.'s opinion and the opinion provided to the petitioners in advance of the town meeting into the, in the text of the amendments as they've been amended. So as long as the board has had a chance to review it, I'm happy to put those out publicly and let the public see what town council said, the A G. has said, and labor council has said about the final decision with those, with those, with those bylaw changes. I can do it on Friday, and I can do it right away. Good?
What are you looking to make?
You, I, I thought it was, I must have been misinterpreting. All right.
No, I'm just listening, just listening. I'm not bashful, if I have something to say, I will.
I know. Unfortunately, the reallocation of the C D B G. money, the the remaining hundred-plus-thousand dollars from First Ave. that we wanted to use to redesign the access to the Village Cemetery as part of the Complete Streets project, has been denied to be used for that purpose because after review, there's no way to make a, according to the the C D B G. people, there's no way to make that cemetery ADA compliant and maintain its historical appearance. We've already talked to the Historical Commission, they're disappointed, but we've made a commitment to look at the Complete Streets program. Maybe one of the things we was, we were talking about during the meeting, and we're talking about again, is to have a sidewalk opposite with kind of in the landing area opposite the Village Cemetery, where it may not be completely ADA compliant, but we can provide better access and discontinue that unsafe sidewalk, so at least we can take care of the safety issue in front of it, maintain the historical nature of it, and provide some, some better access where it may not be ADA compliant. We're committed to use the Complete Streets funding to move forward with that project.
So we're not going to lose that funding?
No, no, we're not going to lose it. We can't reallocate it to the village project, so what we want to do is, is take a look at the Jericho infrastructure area in and around Pine Street sidewalks and so forth, maybe some, some more ADA compliant parking and access to the playground that's on Pine Street, as well as take a look at the second floor of the town hall. The entry door doesn't have a, an automatic door opener and closer, which was one thing that was pointed out on the ADA review that we did a few years ago, so we have an opportunity to maybe, maybe address that, maybe do some signage, so we're looking at other, we're not going to waste the money, we're going to put it to good use, we just can't use it for the cemetery. Speaking of ADA compliance, M J. and Olivier and Joe Ferguson from C M R P C and myself met at the beach last week, and we had a grant for an architectural barrier removal project. We were funded for the grant, and they're working through the engineering plant for that design, which will make, make us eligible to apply for construction funding. With that funding, we're going to improve parking and access to the waterfront, and we're going to redesign the bathhouse so that it's ADA compliant as well. So that project's moving forward. Once we get the design in hand, we'll move forward with applying for more grant funding for construction money, so maybe by next year, we'll be in good shape over there. We're working towards a plan. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Not necessarily directed at what was originally spoken, spoken about, but the Pine Street Park. I have a hard time understanding how, if we made any improvements to Pine Street Park, how anyone could actually get there, what a line of cars parked there all the time, nobody in in the park. So I I think we need to, if we're going to put money, should we improve that park if we can get, you know, tax-neutral funding for it? Absolutely, but how are people going to get to the park if it's used as a parking lot by local residents?
It's not one of my favorites either, I use it as an example of something that was brought up. And it's not my favorite because there's not going to be enough money to do what we need to do to. need to do to adjust the parking and the ADA compliance in that area to make it worthwhile. But the good news is that CMRPC is going to come in again, and we're going to talk about these projects with the board, and at some point, they're going to try to get on the Water Sewer Commission's schedule to see if there's anything that can be redirected towards any of their projects for infrastructure in that area, so we'll have some options before us.
Thank you. Assistant Town Administrator?
Nothing tonight, Madam Chair.
Fabulous. Board member comments? Mr. Sigunovich?
Generally speaking, the health insurance rates for the town going up by 18% and then 20%, that's going to increase what the town has to pay for health insurance. So, this upcoming town meeting might be interesting budget-wise going forward, we're not sure what that's going to look like. I think there's a lesson to be taken from what happened with the trust in that we need to build up our reserves, our stabilization fund. I know we've used it quite a bit over the past couple of years to balance the budget without taxes going up, but it shows when you don't have a reserve to manage the little bumps in the road that happen, those little bumps can become much bigger and affect a lot of other things. Interesting times ahead. Please show up and vote. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Absolutely stole my thunder. I'm on reserves.
Get used to it, I'm first.
It's all right, I got it down.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And just very quickly, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who has worked to get the playground project up and running, Dudley Women's Club, TA's office, like, there are just, there are so many people that have been trying to get this going, and it's really exciting to see. I know it's supposed to be a small thing, but it's not small, it's a new project going on in town after a lot of waiting, so I find that very exciting. And also, a quick shout-out to the Small But Mighty Highway Department, I have seen them cutting back, and they're doing a great job. I know everything's growing like crazy, so I really appreciate it. The visibility's been a lot better in the places that they've been focusing on, so just thank you for that. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.